All right, I'd like to adjourn the study session for February 8th, 2011, for the Newport Beach City Council. Adam?
Reconvene.
I'm sorry. Reconvene. So, do we need to do roll call again?
Yes. The record will reflect that Councilmember Curry is absent, and he has an excused absence.
Then, with regard to our study session agenda, do we have any clarification items for the consent calendar? Councilwoman Degel?
I have none.
And Councilmember Selich?
I have none.
Councilmember Rush?
I do. On item number five, the reference in the chart of P., was that, does that refer to permanent? It's on the CD. It's on the disk. When you look at the chart in many of the blanks?
Yes. P. equates to permanent records.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Wazansky?
None, thank you.
And Councilwoman Gardner?
And I have nothing.
And so, we're on to item number two on our study session, which would be council meeting, procedures, and norms. And do we have a staff report for that?
We have a brief staff report between the three of us, the city clerk, city attorney, and myself, Mr. Mayor. We have heard throughout the weeks and months leading up to today, different ideas for improving the agenda. And part of the improvements involve involving the public, especially on public comment time on non-agenda matters, earlier in the evening, so that folks don't have to stay there so late. There's a couple of other things that we'd like to talk with you about, including the way we get the agenda to you and to the public each week, sorry, every other week before the meeting, as well as kind of a broader thought that the mayor had, and I'll let the mayor comment on that, that the council could take a new look at its policies, and it does have a couple of policies, A6 and A10, relating to decorum, kind of a more broader discussion about civility and respect. And so, we have a couple of documents to back this up in your agenda packet, and we'd welcome your comments and thoughts, and your comments may spur our own, so we're interested in your dialogue here.
I'm just curious, where did this council norms proposed document come from?
It came from me and Jan Perkins, looking at what other councils have done in terms of those norms, so apologize for not being more clear on that.
And just briefly, if I may, with respect to policies A6 and A10, the goal with respect to that is to, well, when I try to do modification, I try to keep things the same, except for the matters that we're changing. I don't go and tinker with a lot of other things, because there's a value to having continuity, an ongoing continuity. So, what we've addressed is specific issues as reflected in the staff report, and also the issue of when the agenda packet would be produced, for your consideration. The reason that we've talked about the agenda packet being produced on Thursday instead of a Wednesday is what effectively is happening is the city clerk's office is going through two agenda packets series for each council meeting. Goes through that for on a Wednesday and goes through it on a Friday, and it's basically a cost savings device. We would, intention would be to just do one agenda packet on Thursday. Yes, we could still produce it on Friday if necessary, but we'd prefer not to, because we're trying to cut down the expense of operating an agenda packet. The other substantive issues that you're faced with, it's, one's the packet, one's moving public comment to the front of the agenda, one's changing the testimony time for matters already on the agenda from five minutes to three minutes. And in that vein, I would say the city clerk has conducted a review of the agencies, other agencies in the county of Orange, and found all the agencies are at three minutes, except for four, they're at five, Garden Grove, La Palma, Yorba Linda, and Buena Park, but every other agency that responded, which I believe is every other agency, city is at three minutes. And then, there's a reflection on the question of abstentions, they're just noted, has changed, allowing for the abstentions for colors and lights. There were also comments by Mr. Mosher that I can address if you have any questions with respect to them.
Councilwoman Gardner?
As far as moving the day we get our packets, I mean, what day we get it isn't, we've got a weekend in between that, that's important. But I'm concerned, I mean, I think it's a great idea that we become more efficient, and we try not to do the two deliveries and all that sort of thing. But we're moving it to Thursday, because we're having trouble getting everything together on Wednesday. What makes us think that, knowing human nature, that we aren't suddenly going to be having trouble getting them on Thursday, and thus, we're going to be Friday and Monday or something as a result?
Well, human nature too, I think, Council, Mayor Bertam Gardner, is that we always know we have a backstop with Friday, and we, I'm one of the biggest violators of that, I tend to think, oh, at least I have till Friday now. If I knew I didn't have till Friday, arguably, we should all be disciplined enough to make sure that Thursday is the day. And I would prefer actually that there not be a Friday packet, that Thursday be the deadline. And that if it didn't make that Thursday, then it goes to the next council meeting.
And if I may, and if I may, in truth, we don't have Monday available to us, because the Brown Act requires.
Yes, I realize that. Then, the other thing is, what about as if we actually do move to our paperless agendas, and we're loading up? Will that make a difference? I mean, we're going to be saving, then, to do updates is nothing, basically.
Yeah, updates would be less problematic, certainly for the folks who do the deliveries. It's a little, it still has the clerk basically posting kind of twice, but.
Well, I'm all, I mean, I think if we can, if this helps make the city more efficient, then that sounds like a good idea.
Other comment on any of these subjects here that have been raised?
Yeah, I'll comment. Personally, I don't think we should go to three minutes on public comments. I think it's worked fine the way it is. We always have the option of reducing it, as we've done in complex matters where there's a full audience, and we see, okay, there's 30 people out there that want to talk, and I think in the past, we've said, okay, five minutes for the first hour, and then three minutes after that. You know, when I first got in council, it was five minutes and five minutes. And we changed it to three minutes, because we did have certain people that were abusing the privilege in the public com, on non-agenda items, and so, we did change it to three minutes for that. But personally, I don't think five minutes is all that long, and I just don't see a pressing need to change it. I don't see where it's affected our meetings. We seem to be getting out fairly early most nights. I don't really see people abusing the privilege. I see people who come up here and talk, say their piece, and they sit down. Some of them don't have enough time, and, you know, if you're going to bump up to everybody's going to come in and ask for more time, it's just going to take more time for them to ask for more time, and create a lot of frustration. So, I would personally prefer to just leave it at five minutes.
Councilwoman Gardner?
I would agree with that. I think that ill will is engendered when we cut people off too soon, and three minutes is, having been on that side and trying to get a well-reasoned argument into three minutes, five minutes can be a challenge if the subject is complex enough. And I think that public benefits from this, by maintaining it at five minutes, rather than, it may not be as much of a convenience, but I would agree.
Yeah, and I don't see where it's been a big inconvenience. I mean, generally, I think most people were respectful of the time.
Councilwoman Degel?
Yes, no, as part of this proposal is sort of a reordering of the meeting, so that public comments would be after council announcements. Did I sort of see that correctly?
Public comments on non-agenda items.
Right, okay. I kind of like a system where, you know, you have your pledge, and you have announcements, and then you have the consent calendar, and then maybe you have public comments on non-agenda items, because I think that gives the council momentum versus, you know, you have your, the pledge, and all of a sudden, it gets redirected to the audience, and, you know, the audience could just, you know, for 30 minutes, you know, discuss an item versus, okay, maybe we can sort of plow through some substantial business, which is the consent calendar.
Plus, another consideration is, you know, we have a significant number of staff sitting here waiting for consent counter items, most of which, at least up until probably just recently, have been passed, and, you know, most of the staff just leaves, now you're going to be forcing staff members to stay later. I don't know, I'm assuming we're paying overtime, at least for the ones that are not department heads, so that's another consideration as well.
Councilwoman Gardner?
I think it's though, to the public's convenience, to be able to come and not have to sit through the entire meeting if you have something to say. And I do think we need to give a lot of benefits to our public to communicate with us. I know that at times, you're sitting here until 10:30 or 11 o'clock at night to get up and have your three minutes say, and it'd be nice to be able to come, have your say, and leave if you didn't want to sit through the whole thing. So, I like the idea of moving it up.
As proposed.
Yeah, I kind of forgot about the staff, but that's an excellent point. I mean, do you want your staff sitting here for half an hour, you know, potentially while you go through public comments? I mean, so the public sits for half an hour, I mean, you could, I mean, I just see that that is a very important consideration. And then, an additional point, I was looking at these norms, and one concern I have is I, I think the voice of the minority is really important in government, and how we deliberate, and how we do things, and I just want to make sure when I see things like we will set priorities and act in accord with them throughout the year, you know, for example, things come up, you know, that a member really needs to address with constituents, so that kind of a thing. It's sort of like, you know, you're corralled into, you know, these issues for 12 months. And then also, I'm unaware that really, any sort of behavior by any individual member is really a problem, you know, why we would establish these norms, you know, I feel that people are respectful.
Okay, other comments? Councilmember Hill?
I would like to ask some questions about A10, paragraph three, addressing the council. You have changed, or suggested the change, that when someone walks to the deus to address the council, that they no longer are required to state their name.
That's a Brown Act exemption, that the Brown Act has been clarified, and David can jump in, but I only know, because I used to work on it when I was with the legislature, that it said that in no way can the city council force anyone to identify themselves. They can voluntarily do it, and ask, encouraged to, but they can't be forced to.
Did that adequately respond?
It was not the answer I was looking for, but it adequately responded, yes.
Okay. All right, other comments? All right, I have a few comments. The council, the open meeting policies, which is A6 here, references this issue of two meetings per month in December and August, and I presume we're going to deal with that issue separately, as a separate matter.
And I have, I have just written to Mr. Mosher and given him my opinion with respect to it, I do not believe you need to address that in this context.
Okay. With regard to the public comment, the timing of public comment, I guess I'd be flexible if we wanted to do it after consent as opposed to before consent. I don't think that's an undue burden on the public. It does give them reasonable expectation about when they're going to be able to make their comments, and it certainly is a big improvement over what we currently have. And so, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Frequently, the public, I mean, the consent counter items are done in the first 10 or 15 minutes, so it's not even, that burdens them.
Personally, as your mayor and running the meetings, I hope we wind up pulling fewer consent items in the future.
I second that motion.
Well, I think part of that is, you know, like, an ordinance on operator licenses that should probably be placed in public hearing, I mean.
Yeah, we'll try to be more thoughtful about where we place these agenda items in the future. And then, secondly, I did want to sound a counterpoint on this three-minute versus five-minute thing. I read this proposal together with the idea of moving up the time period for people to be able to make public comment. It's not exactly the same thing, but that, there's a big benefit to the public in moving up the point in time in which they can make comment. The fact that we might slightly inconvenience the public by having an expectation that they have three minutes to present their comments, I think it's helpful if people understand that that's the limit ahead of time, and are able to calibrate their comments. And furthermore, I think it's pretty doable to present a cogent argument on an item in three minutes, and to the extent that your presentation includes detail or nuance that would require a time period beyond that, it is certainly appropriate, and I would encourage the public, to provide in a separate communication to council, be it email or something distributed at the meeting, with that greater detail, where it can be considered perhaps more carefully by council than trying to cram it into a five-minute presentation. And so, to me, setting the expectation upfront, it's three minutes, I can always, mayor can always provide additional time where it seems appropriate, we've been more flexible on that lately, and certainly, I'll continue to be more flexible on that point. Furthermore, the policy already emphasizes that where we have a group of people, all of whom are concerned about the same issue, and might otherwise want to comment, we can encourage more time to be allowed for a spokesperson for that group, and therefore, provide not just five minutes, but 10 minutes or 15 minutes, and still have a more efficient meeting. And so, I, those would be my sort of counterpoint, I guess, to the points that have been raised earlier on that subject.
Well, I guess, a counterpoint to your counterpoint, is I think that, the problem with, you say three minutes, and then, okay, if they need more time, or it seems like they need more time, we give them more time, is that I think as people sit out in the audience, they tend to feel, well, yeah, he agrees with that position, so he's going to give more time to that, but he doesn't agree with my position, so I didn't get more time. And it becomes an issue of maybe even just perception, and not even reality. So, again, I don't see where it's been problematic, I don't see where it's really increased length of our meetings significantly in the past, and I think from, you know, the public has a right to speak, three minutes is a pretty short, right? Five minutes is a short, right?
Well, I think you make a strong case for three minute, but I think one, at least one exception should be considered, and that of an applicant. You know, I've had to present things, and you just need five minutes sometimes.
I would certainly agree with that, that, and it wouldn't bother me to write that into the policy.
That's in the policy now.
Yeah, it's in the policy.
Councilmember Gardner?
I would agree with Councilwoman Degel, that I think we're a pretty non-abusive group in terms of our practices, but I still think that having norms is helpful, because it assures the public that, that if they see something, that we're not playing games on our computer, we're not dealing with our phones and texting and everything, that if it's an important message, they'll see us go out and know that we're focused. And just to have those written, I think, gives a sense of confidence in that we're all on the same page as far as how we deal with things.
And as to the, as to why would we raise this now, I mean, technology changes, practices change, you know, iPhones and so forth are so much more prevalent now, used for so many more reasons than they ever have been in the past, and so, I don't see it as inappropriate for us to, in an, update norms as that kind of thing occurs. So, this issue of unintended impressions left with the public, I think, is one of significance that we ought to always be cognizant of, so. If there are, if there are no more comments on, from council about what was presented, I'd like to take public comment on this issue, and then we'll bring it back to council, and I'll see if we can't form consensus here.
May I just frame, I apologize, may I just frame one more issue just real quickly?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher does raise a good point with respect to the issue of abstentions, and I would just like to briefly bring it to your attention. It's on page nine of A10, and it's the failure to vote section, and he's indicated that he considers, and I frankly don't disagree with him completely, that a member of council abstains from the voting, and in effect, consents to the majority of the quorum, may decide the question voted upon. Now, in the two agencies I used to represent, the way that was treated was, if you, if there was a, an abstention without a disqualifying conflict of interest, then the abstaining member's vote would be counted with the majority. That's not exactly what this says, okay? And so, and what that does is, is if you count it with the majority, means you don't have any trouble with carrying a majority of all council members seated. There are a number of provisions in our charter or in our ordinances that requires action to be by majority of council members, not majority of quorum. So, this is, if that's what that's trying to accomplish with this sentence, it's not, maybe not what it accomplishes. And I, the council's reflection on that would be helpful. Again, when I started this, when we did the rewrite, I was not addressing things that were not brought up, but frankly, Mr. Mosher makes a good point, I'd be interested in council's approach to that.
Can you address me to that again?
In page nine of A10, and it's in capital C., which is the sec, the full, first full subsection, failure to vote, and it states, every council member should vote unless disqualified by reason of a conflict of interest, which is common, you'll see that in many different ordinances, et cetera. And then, a council member who abstains from voting, in effect, consents to that a majority of quorum may decide the question voted upon. Now, under our charter and ordinances, there's only, there are certain actions you may only take through a majority of council members, so a majority of seven, not just a quorum. So, that leaves a potential area of difficulty, should something happen, one abstains, and we don't have a majority, we have a majority of quorum, but not a majority of council. It is common to say, a council member who abstains from voting, in effect, the vote of a council member who abstains in voting without a disqualifying conflict will be counted with the majority vote. So, if you have, let's say, six of you who vote, well, let's say, tonight, we've got a council member missing, you have a quorum, and you want to pass by a majority of quorum, then you would have, well, shoot, you still have to have four, you have a seven.
Why don't you go with, there's five of us here.
Yeah, there's five, five of you here, and you have three that, three that need to vote on it, that would pass if it was a majority of quorum, but it wouldn't if it were a special one that required a majority of all council. So, if, but if there was an abstaining member, let's say it was a five, one, one vote, excuse me, three, one, one vote, I apologize, numbers were never my strong suit, three, one, one vote, it would actually be recorded in the minutes as a four, one vote, because the abstaining council member would be counted with the majority, and that's all plays off.
Let's say it was a two-to-two vote, and the.
There's no majority, and the motion fails.
Well, do you feel that the abstention has always been used properly? I mean, because someone's in the hot seat, they abstain? I mean, there's certain criteria of abstain, yeah.
There's only one instance I've seen that I thought of abstention was a little bit loosely used with this council, but that's, you know, it didn't affect the actual outcome, so, I mean.
He's not here anymore.
I'm not identifying anyone.
There's a lot of he's that aren't here, I didn't say who it was.
So, this is a question of council's preference. I would say that from a legal standpoint, it is clearer if you say, an abstention without a disqualifying conflict will be counted with the majority vote. It addresses that issue completely, but that's your choice.
So, so if we were to, you would just make that change, we would have to come back as an agreement, and that change would be perfectly in accordance with the law and our ordinances in our charter?
Yes.
Okay. I'm certainly okay on that.
I had one more thing to bring up too, if David's bringing things up. It's something the staff talked about a little bit, and let me make sure I can find it again. Oh, it was in A10, B1, it says, "Members of the council shall not leave their seats during the meeting without first obtaining the permission of the presiding officer." We thought that was a little silly, because I think you guys get up and.
Have a hall pass.
But I don't think you ever asked the mayor for permission.
And we've never observed that requirement.
We were thinking of striking that out, unless there are any objections.
Never stopped me. That would be fine.
If you don't let me leave, I'm going to hover behind your seat there, Mike.
Yeah, number one, number two.
Okay, we should stop there. All right. Are there any other comments from staff here that we should think about? All right, then I would like to throw this open to the public to comment on this agenda item, and we have five minutes to comment on this agenda item.
My name is Jim Mosher, and I live, along with Councilman Hill, in the 3rd District. Last weekend, I sent you some written comments that have been referred to about the item, and I was pleased to see them, and those have some other members of the public available in the lobby, and the city attorney's attention to some of them. I wasn't planning to mention about the voting, but the Section 412 of the Charter actually says, and I have it here before me, "The affirmative vote of at least four members of the city council shall be required for the enactment of any ordinance or resolution." So, in addition to what Mr. Hunt said, ordinances and resolutions appear to need four yes votes. My two main concerns were with the proposed reduction of time for public comments on agenda items, and with the opportunity you have in revising these policies to clarify the requirement related to the passage of ordinances. I'm glad to hear that steps are being taken to re-implement the charter requirement to read the title of ordinances and resolutions before they're voted on. That's a duty expected by the people. It's not one that is difficult to observe, and it is no less important to us than the requirement that the clerk keep a permanent record of those four votes needed for passage. The other item related to the passage of ordinances is the need to designate the official who will be preparing summaries for publication by the clerk, under the strict new state requirements that the voters adopted last fall as part of Measure V. As indicated in my written comments, publishing clear summaries of the effects of each new ordinance is not only now required by our charter, but it's a positive change that we should all welcome. As to the proposed changes in the time and duration of public comment, I think moving public comment to the beginning of the agenda is a good idea, but I see no reason the council could not invite additional comment at the end of the meeting. And another possibly better alternative to what has been discussed here is that you could invite public comment for a limited period at the beginning of the meeting, say for 10 or 15 minutes, and then hear the remainder of the comments at the end, as you do now. As to limiting the speakers on the agenda items to three minutes, I would like to echo the comment of the two council people, who have said they think that's a bad idea. Many of the matters on the agenda are complex, and as Louise Fundenberg says in her written comments, "Most of us in the public are not professional speakers. Standing before you in itself can be intimidating to us. Thinking we will be cut off at some arbitrary point only makes us even more nervous, and it's likely to impair, rather than improve, the quality of input that you receive. Please leave the limit at five minutes." Thank you.
All right, do we have any other public comment on this agenda item?
Hello, my name is Novella Hendrickson, and I'm here to talk to you about the number B., the number of minutes. And I think you've all tried to have a lot of transparency for the public, the public who votes for you, and I think that it's a very easy thing to find out, it's not who votes for you, and I think that it's a very easy thing to find out, it's not a difficult thing when you see the agenda, that if you're going to make a comment on one of the things that are not the, your own comment, that you have five minutes to do that. And many times, you can't get it all together, people aren't professional speakers, they know what they'd like to say, and they try to do that. It doesn't seem like you have been burdened, I have watched the council meetings probably from home for quite a lot, a long time, probably oh-seven was my last time standing here. And so, I think people are pretty respective, respectful in the public, and I think that we should maintain that respect of them by having the transparency of the public, knowing they have five minutes for anything that is important, and there, sometimes there are very important things they want to talk about, and then their own public comment, and I think it's great that you're moving it up to the, to the beginning, because it's very sad to have somebody have to sit there all evening, waiting to say something. And this is their only way of, of participating in government, and I think that the least you can do is to support that, for them to be able to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council, I would like to take just a few minutes here and see if we can identify consensus. I believe we have consensus that moving public comment up in the agenda but to follow the consent calendar is an appropriate thing to do. Lots of yeses, okay. Then, on the issue of moving to three minutes versus five minutes for regular agenda comment items, let me just set up a premise here for us to decide on, and the premise would be to go to three minutes. So what do we think about that?
Just straw vote.
Want to just straw vote? Okay, those in favor of a straight three minutes for both agenda and non-agenda items? Leslie, you're in favor of that? Ed? I'm in favor. Nancy? You're not in favor. Rush, you're not in favor? So.
Did anybody abstain?
That means the straw vote fails, actually.
Next, next time, I'm going to set up the motion differently. When I see six people up here. All right, so I guess we're going to, the guidance is to stick with five minutes for agenda items. Then we add another item here in terms of changing our current practice of both a Wednesday and a Friday distribution of agendas, we'll do another straw vote on that. So the, at the risk, again, of being on the wrong side of how I structure this, I'm going to set it up that all those in favor of a single Thursday agenda distribution.
Yeah, that would be fine, would there be the possibility that all mail can be consolidated to a single delivery day?
Definitely, yes.
That'd be great.
That's a good idea, too. All right, single the distribution of agenda and council mail. Councilman Selig?
That's fine with me.
We got lots of, well, there you go, staff wins one here. And then with regard to Mr. Mosher's comments, his, his written comments were a mix of, as I perceived it, a mix of legal-related nexus with legal issues, and then other more policy-related issues. And so my proposal would be that the city attorney evaluate the legal content items that are raised by Mr. Mosher and come back with changes as appropriate, but that we get a readback of his comments, which those you agree with and are incorporated in a staff recommendation and which are not. But there were, let's see, I thought there was at least one comment, oh, Mr. Mosher had indicated having two times for public comment. I'm going to set up a posit that we keep it at one and get council straw vote, keep it at one, one opportunity for public comment in the agenda, on non-agenda items.
Yeah.
Okay, so that policy issue is, does, did anyone else recognize another policy-related issue here that we need to develop consensus on?
Just to be sure that we're, as a body, in favor of the council norms?
Thank you. Yes, and so, we did present the council norms, I guess there's really two things here, there was the, the meeting of the mayors, the national convention of mayors, that suggested a, sort of a statement relating more directly to the events in Phoenix, but let's take them one at a time. With regard to the proposed norms.
Well, can, can I just ask a question about this?
Sure.
I mean, what, how is this going to be incorporated? I mean, are we just going to say, yeah, we agree to these norms, I mean, those are sanctions if you don't.
Well, this is a studies, oh.
Is it going to be a policy thing now, or?
Yeah, this is a study session item, so we would bring back this to.
No, I realize we're not approving it now, I'm just saying, what, how do you propose incorporating this into the?
It'd be a council policy and/or maybe an amendment to A ten, which does speak to decorum. Right, that was my understanding, is that A ten would, they would come back with a specific amendment to A ten reflecting, to the extent required, some of these norms, I think, we already observe and are probably already covered, but, so it would be an amendment to A ten.
Well, let me ask you this, what's the difference between using an electronic device of this size versus an iPad, which is a far larger electronic device?
Well, we are, you know, we ain't even putting our whole.
Right, but why not, why not allow a phone, there may, there's information on a phone, which is a far smaller electronic device.
Go ahead. The distinction that I see is that this iPad is in fact, to be used for purposes of the council agenda, that's why it's here, and so I do draw a distinction between that and the use of a personal phone.
Right, but it's, it's, it's of a, it's of a far more intrusive and larger electronic device.
Why don't we, I agree with you, and why don't we just eliminate that email, text, or phone call business, and just say we will limit interruptions only to those most urgent, and just leave it at that?
Because you could text on an iPad, I think, I don't, I don't have an iPad, but I would think you could send emails off an iPad, sure.
Yeah, the intent here is to provide the appearance of actively listening to the public and to fellow council members, and so.
Right, but I don't see, sometimes I see this behavior, I'm not sure if everyone's listening.
Well, I mean, Mike, let's face it, you could put a whole list of things in there, I could put crossword puzzles in there, or a bunch of other things I could be doing up here that's not exactly paying attention, so I think the idea is that we want to limit interruptions, which is probably a good idea, only to those most urgent.
And, if you feel that the interruption is of sufficient importance that you need to deal with it, to step out of the meeting to deal with it and then rejoin the meeting.
Yeah, oh, I don't know, I'm just saying, take out the language between the two dashes, be they emails, texts, or phone calls. I think that's what Leslie's issue is here, you're singling out her device when Nancy's got another device here that probably could do most of the things that her device could do.
Not with me operating it.
Or me is either, but, you know, it's.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I'll just take a counterpoint on, I, I really don't see a need to have this, I mean, I don't see we're having any kind of problems, we tend to follow these things as a body, and to me, I, I don't know, it just seems an unnecessary thing to have.
I actually agree with Ed on that, I thought it was kind of weird, too.
Do we, do we have a, a goal of removing unwarranted items out of our documentation and, and then turn around and add things at the same time?
I, I didn't.
I'm talking about, one of our goals is to reduce the amount of government, and at the same time, we add a, a page of doing what we're already doing, but we put it in writing to add to the bureaucracy. Seems to be a bit of a hundred-and-eighty-degree organization.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I think the issue is, do we, do we take these norms and use them without the language between the dashes? Do we want to take these norms and incorporate them into Policy A ten, come back with a change to Policy A ten?
I'm going to move that we adopt Ed's idea and not include this at all.
All right, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in the camp of, let's just keep the regulation down, so.
Ed, well, I know where you are. Councilman Hill?
I support the motion once it's made.
I don't, I think it's a good idea.
I, and I disagree as well, but I guess that's a four to two, so we won't do that. All right.
Can I abstain and then, but the majority has still passed? No, I'm sorry.
And, and as I understand it, I've already received direction, at least from the nods of heads, that the abstention language I talked about was acceptable, and we could make that change.
Yes. All right, is there any other consensus that needs to be developed here?
I think not.
Can't think of any? All right, with that, then, we'll adjourn to closed session. Excuse me.
Public comments on non-agenda.
We need, we've had already a lot of public comments today, public comments on non-agenda items, we'd be happy to have that.
I was here again, not to upset you, but this is a study session, and I noticed this at the last meeting of the coun, of this council, a study session, where we're taking, like, almost like you're voting, and it is a study session, and you're supposed to be studying the issues, not voting. Voting is for the regular meeting and not agendized thing, and I just saw that last time when I, it was the Lido thing, and then today, so I don't know, I just hope that we're within the Brown Act, thank you.
I suspect that we are, but I'll let the city attorney comment on that.
Yes, well, and I can understand the concern expressed by the individual from the public, that what you're doing is straw polling, to give us direction to bring back an action item, you're not actually passing something at this point. It is consistent with the Brown Act for you to give us that type of direction, so staff will know how to proceed. We have had some confusion in the past as to actual council direction, and I think the straw polling has been very helpful for us as a staff to know exactly what we're supposed to do in response to the study session.
Okay.
So in other words, we haven't really decided whether it's five minutes or three minutes, that'll come back.
That's right.
Should presumably have a full council that could go completely differently.
Especially with the three-three, yeah, and we may serve it up to you that way, yeah. Okay, do we have any other comments on non-agenda items? With that, we'll adjourn to closed session.